I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session at seven o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second in, no call for a committee.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burkes absent this evening. Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the February 13, 2019 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, go call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Hi, everybody. Would you please join me in standing for a moment's silence? I'd like to give a minute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is kings, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Dr. McGee will call for attendance.
Chairman Porche.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Here.
I believe we have a presentation by Kevin Coleman Elementary School. Are we going up there or we stand here? Is there a...
You are. I remember it should be one minute and then there's gonna be a video.
So we gotta go up there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So with the potty on the stage, you're going to your seats.
I can try. I don't have much of a voice, sorry, right now, but I can try to project because it's not working. Briefly, I'll just say, so last year, the district had a lot of academic initiatives that we were really excited about. However, we were really struggling with behaviors, and we noticed that a lot of it was because the kids didn't know how to self-regulate, so we were looking for something around social emotional. So Dr. Remka found the Center for Resilience, and she connected me with them, and they decided to pilot their program in our school. And so we incorporated that, and that's what you're gonna watch a little video about.
And I'm, my name is Judy Macheco. I'm a MAP interventionist at Coleman. I don't get to participate in these, but I've seen parts of it as I enter the room and they're finishing up, or sometimes a schedule change and they are in there. And I've noticed where the children do, they love participating in. We have two of the leaders are Ms. Sarah and Ms. Shannon, and they like participating. They take it in, they breathe, they have trigger points. And it seems to have spread where the children are receptive to this, and they know how to regulate themselves with the help of the resilience program.
And it's helping us have that common language around the school so that if a kid in any class is having a tantrum, any staff member can say, you know, remember to, remember your anchor, or you know, what are the trigger points that led you to this moment, and things like that, so that it's common language. So, without further ado.
I'm here for resilience. Welcome to the school.
Hi, I'm Shannon, President of the Center for Resilience. And we offer a social learning program taught through Michaelis. We are here for the whole school year. We see you as twenty three for a half hour, and we're working on building their social emotional awareness.
What kind of activities do you do with the Center for Resilience?
I have to tell you, um, I have to tell you, um, my favorite thing is that, once we've got the kids, we use Julia, I'm just drawing that paper, Julia.
And then breathe out. And breathe in. And breathe out. And one more time, breathe in. And breathe out. Okay, now.
I've drawn the emotion that takes over.
And what happens when your emotions take over? You flip your lid, and what happens when you flip your lid? And you can't, are you your best version of yourself when you flip your lid? No. So what happens when you flip your lid? How do you get back like this, where everything's working together? Oh, what else can you do? Oh, you can do your breathing. What about anything with your body? Oh, so like a movement breath would help you? Do you wanna be in your flip your lid mode all the time? Yeah, we wanna be like this? Where everything works together? Okay.
When you're before you can imagine, is there a need that breathing, count, take you off, expand your body, ask for help, talk to someone?
Or you need, try me, try me, crank me, drink some water, if you step, your clothes are...
So wrap it around your fingers, and why wrap it? Well, well, what they see this like... This is a community of people that are all together. So why helps us all stay happy?
Oh, I think I'll be better.
That's good. I want each other. This is our letter, this helps us to get back, where it's all wrong in our mind, it's a sense of thought, kindness, air, stress, and anger, and pictures. But, and more than I know, work to improve.
This is our... It helps us, it helps us keep calm, and it helps us stay...
I, I do this a lot.
The second part of the activity has been really helpful in my classroom, you know, they come in with the meeting and they teach us student strategies for how to help us to calm down, to get us to have a deal with your parent relationships, and any other social problems that may arise. Eyes closed.
Eyes closed.
Listen to the bell.
Okay.
Make sure you...
I wanna congratulate Coleman School, its principal, teachers, and all the wonderful children we saw tonight. It's great, and I promise I'll try not to flip my lid, take a nice deep breath, and go on. But take, these are recommendations I think that we all should follow. Tremendous. Thank you again, so much. At this time, is there anyone that would like to address the school committee? If you would, please come to the podium, state your name, and your address for the record, please. There are none? Let's go on to recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanna recognize Coleman Elementary, the wonderful students and staff there, and Mrs. Ortiz and Ms. Machenko for being here this evening. It's a great program. The Wensocket High School National Honor Society Underclassmen Induction Ceremony was held in the auditorium at Wensocket High School on January 24th. I wanna congratulate all of the sixty-six underclassmen who were inducted during that ceremony. This year's number of inductees is the most that Wensocket High School's had in many, many years, and I had the pleasure of being in attendance, and it was just a great, a great event. These are the great events that we have in our district where we recognize the hard work, not only the academic work of our students, but the community service and leadership that they demonstrate at Wensocket High School and in the community. So congratulations to all of those underclassmen who were inducted. In an effort to improve the transition from middle school to high school, Wensocket High School and Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center held a series of eighth-grade informational sessions at both middle schools. On January 24th and January 25th, an informational session was held regarding the E-Tech program at the Career Center. On January 28th, an informational session was held regarding Air Force Junior ROTC program, peer mentors, and multiple pathways. And on January 29th, the last informational session was held outlining the selection of electives and pathway surveys for our eighth-grade students. Congratulations to the Wensocket High School debate team on their performance at the One-Hundred Steps to Justice Debate Tournament held at Roger Williams Law School during the last weekend in January. Wensocket High School debaters were on the first-place teams in each division. Aleah Pimiso debating with the Blackstone Academy Partner won first-place team in the novice division, winning all of their rounds. Jeffrey Marr and Azaria Rivera swept all three of their rounds, placing first in the JV Division. Three Wensocket debaters were featured in the Bar State Finals Round judged by a member of the Rhode Island Bar Association. Kyle Roberts placed first with his Blackstone Academy Partner, while Dulce Nunez and Hillary Thielam placed second in a finals that saw only a two-point spread in the points awarded to each team. Congratulations to all Wensocket High School debaters. Wensocket High School teachers Nancy Cazara and Suzanne Walker were recognized as "A Pocket of Excellence" at General Rhode Island Treasurer Seth Magaziner's press conference, which was held on January 10th at the State House. Treasurer Magaziner introduced legislation to ensure that all students have access to personal finance education. Patricia Page, who is a business teacher at East Greenwich High School and the 2014 Teacher of the Year, recognized both Ms. Cazara and Ms. Walker for their work in placing personal finance at the center of rigorous and relevant curriculum. Both are front and center in every state, regional, and national personal finance education training session and have designed a financial algebra class where students learn that financial algorithms exist in the context of personal financial transactions. Nancy and Suzanne are among the many hidden gems of the Wensocket Education Department. Not only have they integrated personal finance into the mathematics curriculum, but they have reinvigorated computer science at the high school and continue to secure grants to benefit our students. Finally, Paris Elementary School fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Sarah Chanese, applied for and was awarded the Carter Spark Grant. This eight-hundred-dollar grant will be spent on social studies materials. Some of the money will be used to purchase materials to encourage hands-on exploratory learning through games and props covering topics of civics, government, regents, and U.S. history. The remaining grant money will be used for a field trip to Sturridge Village, as well as a visit to the Living History Museum. Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, it's just incredible, just wanna add, it's just incredible to see the United Nations meeting. We always congratulate certain pockets of students for doing so well on the activities that they chose to really get involved in. It's a wonder, 'cause I think of myself, I couldn't have done this, and I couldn't have done that. Some of our children really do well, so it's very exciting to see. Any other comments from the school committee? I'm sorry, I'm just... I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll look at the, we'll put the minutes of the January 23rd, 2019, in the open minutes. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes, deletions, curbs? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
And we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Do we have a second? Is there any changes in this group committee member, have any changes, or are there any changes to this, to the consent agenda? Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman, there is one item that I would like to ask you to pull, and that is, that would be... Reposition of 192341. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
And which one is this? Which one? Which month, Mr. Perry?
A reposition of 192341 for CBS Therapy.
Yes.
Thirty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars is for SLP services for travel outreach.
Can you tell us why we're pulling this out?
CBS Therapy at this time is unable to provide us with an SLP, so we are going to need to investigate other avenues to fulfill that requirement.
Are there any other changes that we do, bid to make purchases? I'll make a motion to amend the consent agenda for this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee will call on the amendment.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
I do believe that we may have some folks here who aren't here, who are playing this evening. If you aren't here, please stand so we can recognize you. Aye! Dr. and Mrs. Nato, would you be able to speak to the Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
One more.
Okay. The Health and Wellness Committee met for the first time on Monday, February 11th. We agreed that we will meet the second Monday of each month at four o'clock there at the school. We talked about the bid for food services, which is going to be, I guess, put out mid-march, the RRP. We discussed the wellness policy and some of the adjustments that possibly could be made to it, and certainly there was an emphasis on the wellness committee goals, and there was, there were about eleven people present, there was a lot of input, and so, in all of all, the meeting went very well.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On February 7th, a couple days ago, the Facilities and Safety Subcommittee met at McFay at nine o'clock, and we discussed and reviewed a whole host of items. I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna summarize some of the things that we talked about. In attendance were our committee, as well as Chief Oates from the Police Department, and Captain, or what was it? Daniel? Yes, right. And we had one of our elite firefighters who was there, the President Chief Shatoff, who was away on some other map. So we talked about facilities and we talked about security. We are looking at our transportation contract with Durham is coming to an end, and we are looking at bids to either keep Durham or to change our present provider for transportation, and that's gonna be coming up in the next month or so. In addition, we will be voting tonight on replacing the inside doors, the inside doors are not some of the outside doors at the Career Center, and having walked the halls of the Career Center. I can say that the assessment that those doors need changed is right on. These doors really are in this repair, and we need to change them. So we've been talking about that. In addition, we started looking at twenty five year playgrounds that may need some work, Harris and Burnham, and so we're working on that, and we're looking at contractors that are gonna be working with us on the playgrounds. We also, in discussing with our Director of Facilities, that we need a couple of trucks. You know, it's always good to rotate the fleet, but we have two trucks that Fred Flintstone would be proud to have, because I guess we can see the background. Isn't that true, Mr. Nautari?
Yes, it's true.
So there we are. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that, and that's gonna be part of our, that's gonna be part of, we'll be discussing, and we have to go to bids, but we'll get back to you on that. The five-year plan will be discussed more in April as we, as this gets generated. And then we, then we had a security discussion, and we talked about the safety assessments and the safety checklist that are being performed at our schools. We discussed the need for our SROs, which we will have four about the end of March, I believe. And interestingly enough, I mean, in talking to Chief Oates, which I thought was very, very interesting, is that the focus of the SROs in the Police Department is really to build a relationship among the principals, teachers, and the students in our schools. The last thing, the thing he said to us was, "The last thing I want is to be on the six o'clock news dealing with a very shooter in our schools. I don't wanna be there. I don't wanna have any major problems that are gonna recur. We're here to prevent that, and the way you do that is build relationships. We do not wanna be reactive in our security. We're gonna be proactive," and having him part of this Facilities and Safety Subcommittee is an important asset to all of us. So I think our police and fire are really doing a good job. They're going to be going through the schools and dealing with probably Dr. Sullivan and others to make sure we understand where the special needs children are located. They're planning on putting on their gear so that the children are gonna be used to seeing them. You know, the drills and the lockdown drills, the fire drills will continue, but I'll tell you something, by being proactive and ready is the way to go. And it's very comforting to me to have the two chiefs, the two areas of safety in our city, the bottom are Subcommittee. And that's all I have. Mr. Chairman. Dr. McGee. Do I have a motion to receive and place on file the report for the Facilities Safety Subcommittee?
Motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Kapiskas.
I'm too short for this.
Maybe it's the chair.
I think that's it. The Wensocket Special Education Local Advisory Committee, CLAP, met, as we normally do, on the first Thursday of February, which was February 7th. All business was discussed, the following was discussed as part of all business, changes that are being made to the Alternative Assessment Graduation Requirements, mainly as a result of the changes to graduation requirements concerning the portfolio. We also discussed the need to communicate the new diploma requirements to the out-of-school districts, and were advised that that process was ongoing. There was a discussion on the Community Advisory Board, or CAB, which is being formed at Harris Elementary as a comprehensive school, and parents expressed concerns to make sure special education would be represented with regard to that CAB. The date of the next Parents' Support Group, which is a social gathering of parents, and that is on February 20th at Davenport's in Cumberland, that is Pay Your Own Way. And we were also given an update with regard to the Wensocket High School Behavioral Program. Under new business, we continued the ongoing discussions, though formalized now, with regard to the plan to include out-of-district students to fully participate in such school activities as the National Arms Society, Rhode Island Arms Society. CLAP was pleased to have a presentation by Social Sparks, which is located in Lincoln. They offer social skills groups. It was a very interesting presentation, very informative, very exciting to see that all the programs they offer are even more exciting to learn, they were working with some of the Wensocket High School students in an after-school social skills group. I provided a school committee update at the liaison. I also provided an update with regard to RICEAC, the Rhode Island Special Education Advisory Committee, as I'm a member of that group. That group's next meeting is tomorrow night at six o'clock at Roy Penn, but this might be worris to people. At our meeting in March, on March 14th, Commissioner Wagner, if he's still Commissioner now, will be in attendance to present and answer questions presented to him by the RICEAC. I give the proviso if he's still Commissioner, because everybody agrees we're not sure where he's going at this point. And the next CLAP meeting will be on Thursday, March 7th, 2019, 6:30 PM. Here at Wensocket High School, a handle at 124, enter through door three, then the rear, the rear of the building, which is closer to camera alley.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Once, maybe you wanted to spend on what you discussed about graduation and diplomas, and how is that gonna work now, especially for the transition students?
Are you talking about Alternative Assessment students? Alternative Assessment students are currently required to complete nine pieces for their portfolio. The old portfolio requirements behind school was eighteen pieces, so the Alternative Assessment students were required to complete half of those in order to fulfill the portfolio requirement. With the change in the portfolio requirement now to six pieces, it wasn't fully communicated, that's my understanding, and now as a result of it being fully communicated, the Alternative Assessment students' requirements will also be decreased to six, because there's no reason why probably our one percent most impaired students would be required to complete three additional portfolio pieces than our normal students are. So there's gonna be a change to that, and that, the change in the portfolio requirements was not fully communicated to the out-of-district schools. So those students were still working on the eighteen-piece portfolio. So it's my understanding that as now being fully rolled out to all the out-of-district students, that they will also only be required to complete six portfolio pieces as the students at the high school are being required to complete. As, even though they are out-of-district placements, as I've been arguing for many years, they're still your students.
That's right.
And your rules should still apply to them forever. And your rules should still apply to them forever. And that kind of leads into the whole discussion that we've been having, particularly in anticipation of the high school and National Honor Society induction.
Who's gonna ask you about that?
We've been discussing that. I've been discussing it probably for as long as I've been involved with CLAP and that was twelve years. But at that time, my son was in second grade and first grade, and now my son is a junior in high school. He's in an out-of-district placement. I've never made a secret about that. But he's a straight A student and I inquired why he wasn't invited to participate in the Honor Society inductions. And quite frankly, I'm kind of frustrated with regard to how that process has moved forward. The induction has come and gone and my son has not been adopted to either Honor Society. Part of the problem is that there's no communication between the out-of-districts and guidance at the high school in terms of reporting grades back. That was never part of the requirement. So essentially, when I spoke to the advisors, I was told that they couldn't with fidelity guarantee that a student would qualify academically for those Honor Societies because they don't have a record of, for example, my son's grades, which I found surprising, number one. But number two, the piece that I'm being told now is the provision, the latest bar, is that the National Honor Society requirements require that a student attend at least one semester at the high school in order for them to qualify for National Honor Society. And I suspect that that was put in place as a result of some issues that arisen in the past with regard to homeschool students who were coming in in their senior year and seeking to be inducted into the National Society, Honor Society, and also seeking to participate in valedictorian, soliditorian, when we really have no fidelity with regard to the grades that they received in homeschooling. They haven't been tested. And that schooling has not been provided by a teacher. It's been provided by a parent using the curriculum. But I'm told that that's part of the problem with the out-of-district students, that they're not spending that one semester in the school. And I can tell you that I did not sacrifice my son's out-of-district placement for him to go to the high school for one semester, an environment he's never been in, to qualify for National Honor Society. I also think that that standard is quite unfair. And when I read those standards more closely, it's clear to me that that can be waived by the faculty committee. In particular, the rules speak about military families, that it's very often that a military family would be transferring in to a high school and their child would have not spent a full semester in that high school before they would otherwise be qualified for induction into the Honor Societies. So I think I would best describe that argument as a work in progress. Unfortunately for some students, I believe that ship has sailed, which is unfortunate. But I will continue to work on that for other students. It's clearly not gonna happen for my son, but I will continue to work on it for the other students that are in out-of-district placements because there's another 152 kids that are still in out-of-district placements. And I don't think that students who are already experiencing difficulties in their lives, be it behavior or otherwise, should be penalized if their academics qualify them for Honor Societies and other things of that sort. Thank you.
Dr. McGee, what can you make happen? This sounds like it's, we got red tape and we're here waiting.
So Dr. Sullivan and I have been working, we have conversations with high school leadership. That's gonna continue. You know, we talked at the CLAP meeting, as Mrs. Kapiskas just said, about the, that piece of the, of the procedure with our students. And she's absolutely right. I think it was based on homeschool students because you don't know, you know, although there's a curriculum that the parents have to, you know, present, you really don't know what the grade really looks like. They present the grades, but you don't know exactly what it is that. So, so we are looking at it and I can tell you that, that is something that I certainly don't wanna speak prematurely, but I can, I can say that, that something's gonna change.
Okay. And when will that change?
Well, we've gotta sit down and we've got to first establish, we've gotta, we've gotta meet with the out-of-district administrations so that they have that information there, they have the consistent information, they understand what the different parts of being a member of the National Honor Society entails. Like, for example, there is some community service that's done. And we've had the conversation at, at CLAP meeting, we've also had a conversation with the leadership of the high school that, you know, that those types of components would have to be modified to meet the needs of the student because not, not every student in an out-of-district placement, based on their needs, is necessarily able or capable to perform certain community service. So those conversations will, will be had. So to give you a, a timetable, we're working on it now and we're gonna try to finalize it as soon as we can.
But isn't, we've got a timetable here because kids, unlike us, we just continue on jobs and they go one year after another and then they're off.
I would say that, I would think that for next year, that we should be ready. Right now, we just had the induction ceremony for the underclassmen for this school year and that only happens unfortunately once a year. So it's not, it's really impossible to do that right now, but I think it's more than possible and more than doable to have it in place for, at the beginning of next year when we, when we start that induction ceremony or that induction process.
Okay, so we will be looking for some kind of results, positive results in your discussions with all the folks that you need to discuss this.
Yes.
We need to make this happen.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, Mrs. Kapiskas, CLAP report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. That was very good. Next, we're gonna go into conferences and discussions, our facilities update. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna defer to our acting facilities director for the facilities update, Mr. Natariani.
So as, as I do in every meeting, I have my update report. We walk past the three traffic teachers that we print out of the work order system. But before I get into that, just a quick update. Can you get that back? Thank you, sorry. So a representative from Orion Construction called the playgrounds of Harris, Pothier, Vernon Elementary Schools, she's working for us, she calls us, asks us to replace the mulch with rubber and they're ADA compliant. We're also looking to see what we can do in-house. Recently, I received an email from the trust indicating that they go out to communities and like the community work employees of the trust, so we might think we bring them into this as well. And I released the facilities custodial survey throughout the district and to date we've got 217 responses. So we're capturing data as to what's going on in our buildings and classrooms and what are happening.
Does that something you can share with us in terms of what's on the front row or what can be delayed as we go along?
Yes. So I, as I indicated to the committee, the last time we spoke about this, I'm gonna try and keep it open for several weeks and capture as much data as I can. But as I'm seeing some things come in, I'm checking it and if it's kind of simple, there's, you know, some of my heat's out, we're gonna go out and fix the heat, you know, facing things like that. So, you know, at some point, you have the results, there's some fire trials and wraps and whatnot.
Okay.
Onto the work order system.
Sure.
So just like the technology facilities, so for the past thirty days, there were 125 new work orders submitted, 55 closed, one marked duplicate and one was signed out. As I say every time I do this, this is kind of a capture of what's going on, but again, if something happens in this emergency, when I look for a work order, we're responding the utmost best we can. And as you can imagine, with the winter weather and heating stuff, that's been a major, major concern, so.
Are you finding that the teachers, principals of the schools are more proactive in filling out the work orders and not just letting them sit there and say, "Well, I'll put it in later"? What is your impression about?
They're being more proactive. I think the biggest, even if they don't, so the teachers don't fill out work orders for the facilities, they submit to the main office and the building secretary fills them out.
Sure.
Which probably says something else, I'll show you in the last report that I'm gonna give you. But, but they are reporting through the work order system, they are reaching out to their building principals, they're calling my office, so they're communicating. Just, it's just having more faith in the system. And work order system's not perfect and there is more work to be done and dig and possibly accomplish with the staff that we have, but we're responding as, you know, as the most supportive in the system.
I'm gonna toss you again. Pothier, we have had issues with odors in Pothier and, you know, I've, I've gone there with you, Dr. McGee and others. How's that going? I mean, I think we were pretty much there and there was a lot of work that's been done to handle this situation. I know a lot of parents were concerned or students, whatever. So we're out with this.
So some significant work has been done in that building. To date, I've not had any piece of reports of an odor, although that doesn't mean anything will be happening in that town, but I just, I just went through every day. At some point, just went through that area of the library and, and I have not smelled anything from it myself. It has been warmer weather, which is the heating system, so when it dips down, it gets colder. That's why I'm expecting to possibly see a crop up again. It's coming through the vents with the heating system itself. But we did have, get quality testing done in the building and they came back with no issues, so I'm expecting a formal report later this week.
Okay. Okay.
So onto the next thing, which is incident statistics for common, it takes the average time to close out a work order. So presently, it takes thirteen days, but again, with the type of work that they're, that they're doing, it's, it's impossible that, you know, something is closed much sooner than that. It just depends upon, this is an average.
Sure.
And the last report is the customer satisfaction report. As you can see, over the past thirty days, for the most part, we've had, we've had fourteen responses, most of them have been satisfied. There have been a couple of dissatisfied, usually we email the teacher and try and resolve or mediate or figure out what they want. Or was it just bad communication? Were they truly not satisfied with the service they were seeking? And again, this satisfaction report is based on the feedback we get from the building secretary. Because the teachers don't submit the work order, they can't respond to this or on this set of orders. So that's what we're doing.
Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, please, report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
So let's go right back to Mr. Natariani, shall we?
Sure, why not? Technology!
So, again, you have my annual funding, my monthly report that I submit, I'll get to reporting features in a minute. Just wanna indicate that over the February break, we'll be completing the following technology initiatives, we'll be installing home wireless access points at Coleman, Globe and Vernon Elementary Schools. And this will continue throughout the district, all twelve buildings' access points have been upgraded and available to the system.
Okay.
Getting onto the report, past thirty days, it's an incident summary report, there were 316 closed work orders, thirty, twenty new ones, twenty resolved, nine brought us, six assigned out, five declined and one included for part-time order. So it's been a very busy, busy time of year right now for us, work orders, a lot of different initiatives going on. Incident statistics, the average time to close out the work orders was at three days, for the past thirty days, which is a bump up from the normal two. I haven't quite given over why that is, other than we have some staffing shortage for a little week. All in all, I'm still happy with the performance. And when I get down to the final report, as you can see, with the exception of three particular incidents, all of the work orders, we've responded back on, indicating that the work performed and everyone was satisfied.
Thank you. Anything else to say, Chris? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, the technology report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have no unfinished business, so let's go on to new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve of the collective bargaining agreement between the Wunsaket School Committee and Northern Ireland Council 94, AFSCME, FELCIO, on behalf of Wunsaket School employees, local 1137, 2018, 2012, and with review, presentation of fiscal impact statement. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, we've had this discussion in closed session, is there, are there any further comments with regards, or questions with regards to the contract? Dr. McGee, vocal?
Chairman, Borge.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nado.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, I'd like a motion to discuss, approve on bid 19.09, the career center replacement doors. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion on the doors at the career center? Dr. McGee, vocal?
Chairman, Borge. Yes. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nado.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See, you kinda stole a little money under the facilities and safety.
I appreciate what you said.
It means to some of us, yes. But I'll, I'll address some of the things that we discussed that you just mentioned. So in your packet, each of you has a link to, first, there's a letter that I have put together that I wanted to just share with the committee, which is a letter that I'm gonna be sending out to parents, families in the district, which discusses safety and security in our, in our buildings and our schools. And it describes basically to, to our families, gives them a sense of understanding of which drills we practice each year here in the Wunsaket Education Department. And I have a brief description of each of those drills, just so parents begin are aware of what's happening when their children are coming to our schools. Also has some information for parents in the event that, you know, there is an emergency at their child's school or there is an emergency which would require us to move our students to the high school location. In that situation, that would be a time where parents would need to be unified with their, with their children. So there are times when we evacuate buildings, we have offset evacuation locations and we typically re-enter the building at some point in time. So those are, are pretty basic, but this is just explaining to parents that there might be a situation in the future where their child would be bused to the high school, to be dismissed to them. So that, that's it here. I don't think this is anything that really has ever been shared with parents, to my knowledge, and I think indeed it's important for them to know. I want parents to feel safe, knowing that their children are in our care during the day and that we do have plans in place without sharing the intricacies of some of our plans. Obviously, you know, there are some things that we, we don't want the public to know, but there are certain things that we want our parents to always learn when it comes to the safety and health and well-being of their children. So that I plan on sending out in the next few days to parents. Second thing I'd like to, to talk about is our school emergency management plans. And I've talked to the committee about this in the past. This was something that was shared with the facilities and security subcommittee. Mr. Natariani and I completed a template that we're gonna be sharing with all principals that basically goes over the district-wide state procedures and protocols, so they're consistent at every single school. And that's as simple as when a parent or guardian or visitor comes to the school and they buzz, there are certain questions that each secretary and whomever is manning the front office has to ask each time somebody comes to the building. It also talks about the fire drill plans and it talks about any evacuations that we have, as I just talked about, any offset evacuation, which would be going to their primary site or going to the high school in the neighborhood, having to reunify students with their families. And it also talks about lockdowns as well. So that's finalized and that's going to be sent out. I, I want the committee to know that every school has their own, so it's not as if we're here without this now, but we just wanted to make it unified so that every single emergency plan is consistent. We also have in there, within the emergency management plan, a process for students with special needs, students who may be, you know, in a wheelchair, students who may not be ambulatory. We wanna make sure that, that there is a plan. There is now, but again, we wanna make it so that it's a consistent template from school to school. This will also be shared with the fire and the Wunsaket Police as well. And I know Mr. Natariani spoke briefly about, or I'm sorry to introduce you, Mr. Borge, that we had a nice conversation with, with the fire department and with the police department about coordinating the both departments, sending folks into our schools, meeting with some of our special needs populations and, and right now, we're, we're in the process of, Mrs. Morell is reaching out to the building principals to establish which classrooms those are, and then I'll send that information to Chief Shaw Shaw, Chief Oates, and then coordinate that, that process. And then I also have the hazardous site safety survey report, which again is a checklist, which is something that is required every three years. It was required last year, which we submitted to the Department of Education, which, which has us going school by school. It's a checklist that you basically have to make sure that you're adhering to certain procedures at each of our buildings, at each of our schools. So that's something we're gonna be doing, and I've said this before. So, that's something we're going to be doing, and I've said this before on a yearly basis, and that was conducted this year as well. And then last point that I'd like to discuss, our resource officers.
Yes.
So, we just recently received our second resource officer, Officer Roy. He is currently going between both middle schools, and he's, he's there, we have, we have him for eight-hour shift, which is very nice. We'll be receiving the last two resource officers sometime by the end of March, and one of those resource officers will be located at one of the middle schools, so we'll have each middle school having one resource officer. And we currently have one resource officer at the high school, and that fourth resource officer we can use as a floater, he can be, or she can be at the high school, and we can use them also at our elementary schools, we can use them as well, they can just sort of go from building to building. You know, as you said earlier, building relationships with the resource officer is really the most important part of that. Also, I know that staff and students really feel safer when, when there is a resource officer in the building in case something were to happen, but it really is about building those positive relationships with students, because I know that, you know, with our experience in the past, specifically with Officer City, he was at the high school when Officer Hannah was there currently, you know, a lot of students feel comfortable enough to go up to them and say, "A, something might be happening after school, or somebody might have something." There was an incident earlier this year where students went to an adult and then went to the resource officer at the high school and avoided what could have been a very serious situation. So, so I appreciate the fact that we have our resource officers, and we're going to be, you know, getting the rest of the compliment by the end of March. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I want to just add to that, recently, I went to the school committee chairman's dinner, with 25 other school committee chairman they're at, and many of them do not have a resource officer, and they'd love to have them. Those that have one wish they had more, because they, parents have said they feel more comfortable just to have the presence there that can anticipate problems, and it seems that whatever situation had occurred in schools, once they put a resource officer, a lot of that went away. It doesn't all go away, there's no, there's no way to invent and stop everything, but it brings a better morale, students have another adult where they can go and seek out and, you know, develop that trust in them, and if they aren't afraid to report potential problems, or, you know, just to build that relationship. So, a lot of them are envious of us, that we're doing that, and said, "Well, we're in a city, and some of the other cities are building up their, their resource officer force just, just to be on this side of Washington." So, that's great. Any other, any other comments on the superintendent's report? If not, I'll make a motion to accept, receive, on file his report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
School committee Good and Welfare, Mrs. Kapiskas, first up this time.
You may be sorry.
No.
I have a few things that I do want to say tonight.
Great.
The first one I wanted to comment on was, Mr. Hardington, are you still here? That's why you are. You spoke to us at Good and Welfare at the last meeting with regard to the videotaping of school fights, what you perceive as a lack of policy, as clear guidance to staff as to how they're supposed to deal with school fights, and you really gave me pause to think, thought about Good and Hard for the last few weeks. And from what I'm familiar with as a policy, I think it's lacking as well. Unfortunately, we don't have a policy subcommittee, but I do encourage the members that are to consider taking a good hard look at that policy, because I'm not sure that it adequately addresses the situation in our schools today. I think the use of the term corporal punishment has a different meaning than intervening in a fight, and that gives me pause. Also, with regard to the issue of punishment of students who record fights in terms of trying to discourage them, I don't think that's a bad idea, but I think the real problem is going to be trying to identify those people unless they come forward with those videos. And in terms of people coming forward with those videos, I want to assure you that this school committee member has not and will never rely on that type of video to make any sort of decisions with regard to teacher or staff discipline, because there's no authentication of that video, we don't know how it's been edited. The only video I would ever rely on with regard to any sort of discipline against a staff member would be school surveillance, because I know that can be authenticated, and I want it to be authenticated. I will never make decisions on social media video, so I just want you to know that.
Right.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. My rest, the rest of my comments, I hope, are more positive, although I don't think that's necessarily negative, I think opening our eyes, I think this is a good thing. I received, I assume all the other school committee members received, the press release from the mayor's office today. We got the installation of more enhanced crosswalk signals. There's going to be one now at Honor Olympic on Main Street, and one at the interest of 42 Memorial Park. And I do express my concern that to date, there isn't one outside one of our public schools. There's none on Cass Avenue, those students cross a very busy school street every day. There's none on Blackstone Street for the students crossing at Harris. There's none at Pothia, there's none at Citizens, there's none at Vernon, and there, I believe, I don't know what the traffic is like at Coleman, but I think that those all need to be reviewed. In addition to providing safety for people crossing to social areas or elderly complexes, I think our children are just, are just as vulnerable as the elderly population, and if we're going to put enhanced crosswalks anywhere, we should be looking at our schools as well. Now, my more positive things. I went to the Waptek Open House, I've never been in that building since my daughter was in the high school. I have to say, it was very encouraging to be in there, the students that were there walking around, passing around delicious food, were very willing to answer questions, the changes made to the school are beautiful, it almost looks like a new building inside. And it was very exciting to go in there and also see all the ecologists that were represented to speak to the students. That's always nice to see. I also have to comment that for the first time ever since my daughter graduating, I received a phone blast advising me that there was a CLAC meeting on Thursday night. I have not received one since my daughter graduated in 2015. And I do want to thank Dr. McGee, Mr. Natariani for all the work that they've done, to include the other district students, all of whom have IEPs, in the phone blast with regard to CLAC. That's very encouraging and very helpful for me, and I'm very pleased and I thank you both very much for your work in getting that done. And lastly, I ask this, as a member of the RISIAC, all of the parents by now should have received your invitation and your codes from Panorama Educational Services with regard to the survey work, survey that's for parents to complete with regard to our schools. The deadline for the survey, codes is on March 31st. Please complete your survey, we'd like to have as many parents as possible, complete that survey so that right has an adequate and true reading of how our families feel about our schools here in Wunsaket. If you did not receive your code, the understanding now is that you are to contact the district, contact your school, and they will give you the code to access your survey, used to be you called right then, that's not the case anymore, now you would call your school directly. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kapiskas. I'm sure the policy committee will take your notes and make sure we address the issues, and I'll talk to you after this meeting.
Thank you.
Mrs. Nado?
Okay, I'm sure we're in agreement with Mrs. Kapiskas. As far as the policy committee, which I'm not a member of, the first thing I would do was to eliminate cell phones in school, I'm their person. Their cell phones do not belong on their person, therefore, if they don't have a cell phone, they cannot video anything, they cannot watch movies during class instruction, they cannot play games during class instruction. And I checked into, I know Cumberland has a no cellphone policy in class, well, classes in session. I toured a school in South Carolina who has very few discipline, discipline problems, and they have no cell phones allowed in school except in the lockers, in order to communicate with parents, they are not allowed in the classroom. I think that's a big problem, and I think that that can be easily eliminated, kids won't be happy, but the students that are doing the wrong thing are the students that are paying attention to their education, I believe, to begin with. So, I strongly advise to consider that, and in view of what happened recently, I agree that videos are not accurate, they do not belong on social media, and they could absolutely ruin a person's career, and I don't think that practice should be allowed. I'm done.
Thank you, Mrs. Nado. How do I follow those two? Well, on a cherry note, and by the way, I do agree with both your comments on, on what you shared with us in Good and Welfare. As you know, we've had community outreach programs that Rotary has worked with the school department. Last year, Rotary was involved at Coleman, and the library at Coleman was completely redone, and that was in conjunction with the rent that Dr. Ramco got and the workforce that we ginned up. There were Rotarians there, there were parents, and a lot of folks that helped. Well, this year, where Rotary is, is working with Globe, and Dr. McGee, Dr. Ramco, Mr. Natariani, Mr. Liza, myself, the principal, and some other Rotarians met at Globe in the library to start looking and planning as to what's going to be done with the library, that library this year. And so, the first step is going to be dealing with trying to clean up the library for any junk or treasures that don't belong there, as well as any outdated books that nobody has read for maybe decades that have been sitting there. So, we're going to try and clean all that up, and folks that, you know, will offer some of the, of the treasures to the public as, as custom, and the rest of it will go away, and then the rule will be, all the books will be removed, copying will be taken out, there'll be painting, and there'll be, there's, last year, we had a lot of construction that happened in Coleman, I don't think we're going to have it this year. But it's going to be a fallout project where we're going to involve Rotarians, we'll involve parents, we'll involve folks from the school, anyone who wants to volunteer, the community. It's a great way to, to make friends and really work on a project. And so, the initial steps of getting rid of the treasures are going to start in March, and this will progress all the way into the summer where the library will be completed next year. Hopefully, we'll be selecting another school and another library. That's all I have. Mrs. Capwell?
Thank you, Chairman. So, I have four things, but I'll keep them brief. Starting off with, just to expand upon the experiences that I had at the Honor Society, the professionalism with which these students ran in the evening, along with all of the other students and the parents, was, was really something important for me to get to see firsthand, so I definitely commend them on that. I was unfortunately out of state on the 7th, so I was not able to attend the open house at the Career Technical Center. However, I did take the opportunity to watch the one-minute video that Director Webb sent out. My comments back to him were, it actually made me want to enroll the next day. It was just a very, very well-done video. And then, you know, my question was, how do we get this into as many people's hands as possible? To which, I was pleasantly surprised that it had already been sent to 750 households outside of the district, along with all eighth, ninth, and 10th graders and their families, so another 1,400, 1,400. So, clearly, they've got that well, well underway. Earlier tonight, on the consent agenda, we approved the Smile Club to do an overnight at URI, so I just want to say first thank you to those teachers in chaperones that are going to be accompanying those students. And I suppose I would, I'd really welcome, whether it's with the Smile Club coming back to the school committee afterwards, to tell us about what it is that they experience over the course of these trips that we approve, or even if it's just, you know, the teachers when they're going off to these conferences, it would be really nice for us to hear back from everybody about what it is that they're, that they're doing. And last but not least, just to let everybody know, most if not all of us on February 23rd will be doing our own continuing education as part of the collective bargaining through the Bryant Path and Field Institute, so we can also inform you exactly how that goes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having no other business on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn to meet at 8:07. And do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Right.